I think Mr. Prince will join us in just a second. So, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting. We have five items on the agenda tonight, so we'll have to keep it moving along pretty fast. We've got Evergreen Treatment Services briefing, Neighborhood Program update, King County comprehensive plan briefing, Regional Fire Authority and our local agreement, some follow-on items from last week's discussion, and then finally, regional issues if we get to it. And so, I'm gonna go ahead and take them in the order published, starting with the Evergreen Treatment Services briefing.
Good evening. I'm Karen Burksvik, the Human Services Manager for the City of Renton, and I'm here with Brad Feingood, who's the Assistant Division Director of King County Behavioral Health and Recovery Division, and Molly Carney, that's the Executive Director of Evergreen Treatment Services. So, our briefing is on the methadone clinic that will be opening in Renton, and as I understand it, we have about 20 minutes to cover the need, the role of King County, and the particulars about the clinic, and then we'll do questions and answers. So, Brad's gonna start it off with some of the needs for this facility.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Of course. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Feingood, and I am the King County Assistant Division Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery. I'm the Alcohol and Drug Coordinator for the county. I also have the privilege of co-chairing a opiate, I'm sorry, a heroin and prescription opiate task force that the county co-convened with the City of Seattle, yours, the City of Renton, and the City of Auburn. And so, before I get started, I just would like to thank the City of Renton and Mayor Laws for co-convening the task force. Additionally, the City of Renton played host to a community conversation about two weeks ago on heroin and prescription opiates. And so, we had about 120 members of the community here in the City of Renton to hear from them about what's going on in the community, and to be able to take that back to our task force and feed our task force recommendations about how to treat and how to work with the emerging issue and the epidemic, if you will, of heroin and prescription opiates. So, we know that heroin and prescription opiates is a huge problem in our community. It's not just, it's not just in our community, it's not just a King County issue, it's a nationwide issue. People are dying at a rapid pace, and we know that the only way to really effectively deal with the heroin issue is to provide treatment. That's not the only way. That's the most effective way, is to provide treatment. For too long, we've been trying to incarcerate our way out of our problems, and as hopefully you know, arresting our way out of drug problems just hasn't worked. It's made our problems a lot worse. So, this is just a little bit about how we look at, how we break down regionally, the public health issues that occur in our community. And as you know, people, due to suburbanization of poverty and due to economic considerations, more and more people continue to move south out of the city of Seattle. So, what used to be known as city problems are now moving. And with opiate issues, we know that opiate issues are expanding, and so opiate issues do not, are not just an urban problem, they're a suburban problem, they're a huge rural problem, they exist in all areas of the community. I'll share a personal story with you real quick. I'm the survivor of a younger brother who died of a drug overdose, an opiate overdose. He was 26 years old, he was a college graduate, he worked full-time at a bank, he could have been related to anybody, and any of you or any of us. We know that really opiate addiction and addiction as a whole knows no boundaries. And so, when we got the phone call on New Year's Day from the hospital that my brother had died of a drug overdose, it brought, it really brought things to light. It was a problem that we didn't know and we didn't see, because as, as the drug trends also tell us that opiate addicts are affecting younger and younger people. You can see the average first use of treatment now, people are starting at a younger and younger age. So, people are start, the average first use of drugs, of drugs, and this is specifically opiates, is 22 and a half years old. People use for an average of 12 years before they end up in treatment. If they make it to treatment, we know that a lot of people who suffer from opiate addiction and who die of overdose never make it to treatment, right? They've been using for 12 years, and all of a sudden, they'll have passed away. I can speak from my brother's issue, we never knew, right? I was a drug counselor, and I didn't know. He didn't show track marks, right? He smoked, he smoked heroin, or he snorted, one of the two. He never showed track marks. He went to, he held a job every day. He went to work every day. He was a college graduate every day. Me and him went to, we both went to Michigan State together. Nobody ever knew, until he turned up dead, right? And so, this is the, these are the services that we need to be able to provide for our community to make it so people don't die, and we can have better health outcomes, because we also know that it costs a tremendous amount of money to treat untreated opiate addiction. Talk to anybody, our hospitals, our ERs are filled with people who cannot receive treatment for their addiction issues. So, here's a little bit about opiate-related deaths. You can see how, how things have changed over time, right? And so, from any opiate-related deaths, I'm referring to sort of the top set of cells in the bottom right-hand corner, and the top set of cells, the, in the South King County, which is our region that we're, that we're in right now, there's been 107% increase in the per capita rate of overdose deaths. So, between, over, over a 10-year period from nine, I'm sorry, 15-year, 15-year period, sorry. I was a therapist, not a calendar person. Over a 15-year period, the number of people have doubled, and we know that it's even more. Last year, more people died of opiate-related deaths than ever before in the history of King County. We had approximately 147 people die of opiate-related deaths in King County. So, the need continues to grow, I'm sorry, 156. Treatment emissions for heroin use has doubled since 2010. So, since 2010, we've seen doubled the amount of people who came, who have come into treatment. When I came to this area and in the field, the major drug of choice was methamphetamine, that has shifted, right? It's starting to come back, we'll see it, we'll see it come back. The number of methamphetamine and heroin-related overdoses in 2015 were at an all-time high, right? But it's, but it's always involving heroin. Treatment emissions increased 32% from 2013 to 2014. Publicly-funded medication-assisted treatment programs have increased 35%, and we know that it's still not enough. One of the things that is really important when we talk about providing effective treatment to people in our community, they have to receive treatment near where they live. If they have to travel for treatment, they're not gonna go to treatment, and their lives are gonna be consumed by trying to get treatment. It's a lot easier for people who are suffering from substance use disorder problems to get high than it is to go to treatment. So, what our job is, is to make it easier to get treatment than it is to go and get alcohol and drugs, and we know that that is not an easy thing. That's a little bit from, from my perspective. The last bullet point is really important. We know that between 500 to 1,000 people travel almost every single day from South King County up to Seattle or further to get medication-assisted treatment for their opiate addiction. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Molly Carney. I'm the Executive Director of Evergreen Treatment Services, and thank you for having me here. I look forward to working with you all. I'm trained as a clinical psychologist, and I have worked as a research scientist at the University of Washington Alcohol and Drug Abuse Institute for about 15 years before I ended up as the Executive Director of Evergreen. So, Evergreen has been in existence since 1973. We're a private nonprofit organization, and we specialize in the treatment of adults with opioid use disorders. Medication-assisted treatment for adults with opioid use disorders is incredibly heavily regulated by a number of entities, mostly at the federal level, but also at the local level as well. So, the treatment that we offer is very standardized. It involves, at our clinic, we will be using two medications that have been approved for the treatment of opioid use disorders. We'll be working with methadone and also buprenorphine or suboxone, which you may have heard about. The clientele that we work with are mostly low-income and publicly-funded folks, so we see primarily a Medicaid population, but we will be working with people with third-party insurance, folks who haven't quite gone off the rails as much with their opioid use disorders as folks who end up being homeless, for example. We will be operating down at the IDC Medical Building on the Renton-Kent City Line, and the way that our program works is, once patients get admitted to our treatment voluntarily, everyone is there voluntarily, we don't take any court-mandated folks at all. People have to come to our clinic six days a week to consume their medication in front of a registered nurse. So, the nurse will do an assessment of them to see whether or not they're appropriate for the medication that day. If they are appropriate for medication, the nurse will give them the medication, the patient has to drink it, it's a liquid, they have to speak so that we know that they've ingested it, and then they, they go on their way. All of our patients are required to engage in counseling. We have mostly master's-level psychologists and also social work folks. They're all chemical dependency professionals. Every patient is assigned to work with a medical provider that is either an AR&amp;P or a physician assistant, and they're also required to give us random urine drug screens on at least a monthly basis. So, it's a very intensive form of treatment, it's very time-consuming for them, as I said, they have to come onsite six days a week. This is one of the reasons that we wanted to open a clinic in the south end, because as Brad said, there are currently somewhere between 500 and 1,000 people leaving their communities down here in the south end of King County, going up to downtown Seattle to get their medication. And we also know that there's a large unmet need for treatment down here for folks who aren't yet engaged in treatment. We have a very active role in working with the communities in which Evergreen Treatment Services has our clinics, so I'm happy to say that I believe this is one of the ways that we differentiate ourselves amongst the opioid treatment programs. We have a very heavily involved and active public safety presence inside and outside of all of our clinics. So, at the IDC Medical Building, we will be having, we will be starting with three full-time public safety officers. There will be one inside the clinic to make sure that everything is going smoothly, and there will be two outside, one at the door of the IDC Medical Building to make sure our patients aren't wandering around where they're not supposed to, and then one in the parking lot in the adjacent green belt to make sure that they're coming and going from the clinic as expected, not loitering or staying around longer than needed. We are currently planning on opening our clinic about August 1st. The construction for the site is done, I think it's gonna be finished this week, actually. So, the month of July will be spent going through our accreditation process. We have visits by the Drug Enforcement Administration, the Board of Pharmacy at the state level, and we have to be accredited by the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration as well. So, it's during that time that I would be happy to give any of you a tour through the clinic if you're interested. I've let Karen know, we're happy to take any of the Renton City officials through there so that you can see how we operate and get a visual picture of how this works. It's a kind of an odd kind of treatment, there's a lot of, I think, assumptions about what the treatment involves, so I'm very happy to give tours, because I think it really helps educate people about the reality of what we do. We have an interdisciplinary staff down there, you've already heard me describe a couple. We've got PAs, AR&amp;Ps, social workers. We've also got acupuncturists down, down there. We're hoping to, we're hoping to open an acupuncture clinic within our clinic. Acupuncture has been found to help people who have drug cravings and sleeplessness, even symptoms related to trauma. It can help kind of calm people down and help them move into their recovery. So, that's another discipline that's represented amongst us. We also have a licensed clinical psychologist, and our medical director there will be an addiction psychiatrist, who has been working with us for the past 26 years. So, you've got a lot of very experienced folks coming into your community, and I'm hoping that we can continue our excellent reputation with the community here in the City of Renton and work all with you as, as best we can.
Very good.
So, are there questions?
Council have any questions?
I had one. Sorry, my microphone's off. The medicated, medication-assisted treatment, is that for life, or does it, does the patient eventually wean off the assisted medications?
So, the scientific and the policy community really understand opioid use disorders as a chronic relapsing medical condition. So, much like hypertension or diabetes, we don't know how long people may need to be on their medication. There are some folks who can come into a course of medication-assisted treatment for a limited period of time. These are folks typically who do not have decades' worth of substance use in their history. They get stabilized on the medication, they're able to make a number of behavioral changes, taper off the medication, and go off and do quite well. Those tend to be in the minority, and the reason for that has to do with the way that opioids interact with the brain and the persistence of the changes that happen in the brain. So, many of our patients are with us for an extended period of time, but as they stabilize, they should be able to go back to work, re-engage with family, be productive members of society so that you wouldn't know that they were on medication, just as you wouldn't know as any other medication.
Thank you.
Just a real quick story on that. When I started working in this field almost 20 years ago, I met a gentleman who had been on medication-assisted treatment for 20 years. And I, it was, it was amazing to me, I was like, hey, don't, don't you wanna get off? Aren't you like, isn't this, isn't this annoying? And he goes, you know, he goes, ever since I started taking this medication, I was able to be a dad to my kids, I was able to go to work every day, and I never once committed a crime. He goes, I tried to go off of it once, and I was out there, and I was, and I was doing bad things that I shouldn't have been doing, and I wasn't a dad at home, and I wasn't taking care of my business. So, I started back on my medication, and I was fine. And so, it just goes to show you that, you know, as Molly was, was talking about, we were, the more we learn about substance use disorders and opiate use disorders and the way that it affects the brain, the more that we understand that appropriate medication is sometimes what it takes for an individual to live a normal, productive life.
And actually, just one quick thing, too, is that patients don't get high from the medication. So, if it's, if it is dispensed appropriately and the medical order is appropriate, it's just enough to take them out of the highs and lows of heroin addiction, to keep them out of the lows, and to keep them stable like that, so.
Yes, I was reading the articles that were attached, they're very informative.
Good question, good answer.
I do have a question.
Vavoni?
So, there's quite a stigma that surrounds the MAP programs, or is there any public outreach that you'll be doing, or kind of public awareness kind of things, or?
All the time. Really, I've been actually on a kind of a major speaking tour over the last several months. Just last week, two weeks ago, we filmed a one-hour panel discussion with KCTS 9 around, it's a community conversation around heroin. I've been speaking at a number of court systems around the area, several municipal courts, the King County Superior Court, the US District Court. So, I've, I've really been kind of pounding the pavement, trying to help people understand what the realities are of medication-assisted treatment. I also reach out to the business community. I'm a member of the Seattle Rotary Club, and I've spoken to that audience. I really enjoy going to rotaries and speaking to members of the business community, and again, helping them understand. So, outreach is a very big part of what we do.
And stigma, I mean, you're right, council member, I mean, stigma reduction is probably one of the biggest things that gets in the way of us being able to provide effective treatment. It also is one of the biggest things that keeps people from seeking treatment because of the stigma associated with that. Two weeks ago, when we had the community conversation here in Renton, that's what we heard, is stigma reduction, and how do we do stigma reduction by keep having conversations? People who attended that, the 120 people who attended, said, having those conversations is one of the first steps to being able to de-stigmatize addiction, be, being able to de-stigmatize treatment. Because we know, we also know that when we try to provide substance use disorder treatment to people who are opiate-dependent without medication-assisted treatment, treatment outcomes fall tremendously. People are detox, which would be part of the normal protocol, people, treatment regimen after detox is much less successful scientifically than it is on medication-assisted treatment. So, we know that we're able to keep people clean, sober longer, people on medication-assisted treatment, overdose-causing death rate is cut in half for those people who are on treatment.
I think both Molly and Brad have offered, if we have organizations that we think would be good for them to present, they're more than willing to do that, we just need to work it into their schedules.
Absolutely.
Do you want to talk about community outreach?
Sure. So, as I mentioned, during the month of July, we're gonna be offering public tours, and I'm literally happy to take anybody through there, especially before we open on August 1st, before we have the medication onsite. So, I've already been speaking with our landlord, there are, I think about 15 other medical tenants in the IDC Medical Building, so we'll obviously be touring them and any of their stakeholders who are interested in learning about us. We will also, we are required to have two public meetings as part of our accreditation process. This is written into the WAC. I just submitted our paperwork for this two weeks ago to the state, so they will be convening, there has to be one public meeting in the county of residence of the opioid treatment program, and one in an adjacent county. So, that will be public information that's available, and anyone is able to come. At those meetings, I tend to have tables set up with handouts and kind of posters so that people can learn about us, and that it hopefully doesn't turn into a, you know, rotten tomato throwing contest, which is, which is sometimes a risk with those public meetings, but there will be an opportunity for people to ask questions and to get those questions answered, so.
Good. Any other questions from the council?
I do, I have one more, sorry.
Sure.
One more question. So, with the, you have three public safety officers onsite. Are those off-duty police officers, or are they security guards, or?
No, they're not, like, they don't carry a weapon, they're, they are employees of Evergreen Treatment Services. They are people who are trained in safety and the particulars of our patient population. So, the folks that we tend to employ for these positions are ones who have worked in safety settings in like hospitals, people who have familiarity with mental illness and chemical dependency.
Okay.
So, we try to work with our patients to help them comply with the rules that we have, and we do have some very strict rules, and also to enforce, limit-setting when that needs to be enforced as well.
Okay.
Just a note, real quick, I went to, one of our other medication-assisted treatment facilities is right on Summit and Seneca, right downtown in the city of Seattle, and we've been working with the First Hill Association around that area, because it's a pretty high-end area where there's a lot of new builds, you know, 13, 30-story condos that are going up. And at the last meeting, the community association said, you know what, the square block, or the square two blocks around the medication-assisted treatment facility are the cleanest, are the cleanest blocks in our town, because they have the same type of off-duty, or the same type of security and community relations folks, patrolling the area, making sure that people aren't, aren't loitering, making sure that the area's cleaned and picked up after. And so, it's really advantageous to bring to the community.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you coming here.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. So, next up is the Neighborhood Program Update.
Well, Casey's setting up. Council President Corman, council members, I'm Kelly Beamer, the Community Services Administrator. Like to give just a quick intro. You've all been forwarded the presentation, so with, in the interest of time, Casey's going to zip right through this, I believe. Would like to let you know that Casey spent an extraordinary amount of time out in the community, talking with all of our neighborhood leaders, and accessing their thoughts, their concerns, their, their wishes to how they would like to see our program move forward. We also have been, we had offered the new, the past Norma position, the Neighborhood Coordinator, to an applicant, and unfortunately, the applicant at last minute withdrew from that selection, so we've moved forward. Casey's done a great job. We've got four applicants that she's already done pre-interviews, and we're moving them on to second interviews next week, so we should be filling that position in the very near future, so we're really excited about that. And with that, I'd like to introduce Casey Stanley, our Neighborhood Resources and Events Manager. Again, spent a lot of time with the community in our neighborhood, so we'll let Casey walk you through our proposal.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember President Corman and Council. As you said, I'm Casey Stanley, I'm the Neighborhood Resources and Events Manager. Thank you for the opportunity that you've given me tonight to update you on the progress of the Neighborhood Program. The Neighborhood Program began with a vision to promote positive communication with the city government. Since 2015, we've been evaluating the program and asking the question of what should the program look like in the next five years. In March of 2016, we lost a very important component of the Neighborhood Program, which was Norma. She was the heart and the soul of the program, which we all know. But before she left, we started to lay the foundation for change that would help the program be successful in the future. We started looking at the five pillars of the program and how we can maximize each of those areas, grants, training, program, engagement, and the liaison program. Over the last couple of months, we have personally met with many neighborhood associations to learn about each of their group's history, board strengths and challenges, current and desired programming, areas they would like to have support from the city, and how they view this program being structured in the future. We conducted surveys at the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Event. We met with stakeholders, the volunteers that helped with the program, city staff and council. We met with neighborhood leaders that are active in the picnics, the workshops, and the grant opportunities. Overall, it was 25 different leaders that we personally met with, and we attended four different neighborhood meetings also. Which one are you?
Actually, real quick, Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Prince?
Question. So, you, can you run through who you said you met, what again, I'm sorry?
So, we met with 25 different community leaders that were the neighborhood association presidents, or vice presidents, or the chairs of the different picnic committees, the ones that were really active. So, pretty much anybody who had a picnic last year, we met with, and then anybody who applied for a grant, we met with, anybody who came to any of the workshops, the main leaders, we worked, we met with.
All right.
I can give you a list of all the different neighborhood leaders?
No, no, no. I just wanted to ask you that so I could make my question clearer. Have you talked to any of the folks that were on the crew, the picnic crew?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And their thoughts are kind of?
Yep, they're all in there.
Mr. President?
Hi, yes, Ms. Prez?
Any new leaders?
I'm sorry?
Any new leaders?
Any new leaders? Yes, so we have a couple of new recognized neighborhoods that are coming on, that actually have submitted applications to be a recognized neighborhood, and I've met personally with them, I've met with, they've actually had a meeting, I've met with them and talked about the future. And they are actually new neighborhood associations, not HOAs, so they're starting from the grassroots, and they're real true organizations that are really trying to funnel around something within their neighborhood. So, that's President Park, and then there's another association that's up kind of in the East Plateau area, but the name, I can't remember quite the name, but that one is actually an HOA that they're looking to come on board.
Thank you.
And Councilman Prince, to answer your question as far as who we've met with on the team that was part of the picnic team prior, that was part of the 2015 work that we did with Norma and Casey, and then moving forward, we've started some other conversations with some of the past team, Chief Milosevic being one of them, and then moving forward through part of what Casey will be discussing, we'll be continuing our conversations with the team as well.
Anyone else besides the chief?
Yes, so we met with George Stahl, we met with Kevin, we also met with you. We also met-
Wasn't, wasn't talking about?
And Dawn. So, the ones that were the main core people, they were coming to, for the picnic program itself, and then all the liaisons, too. So, met with the liaisons, talked about how, what their role was in the program, how they saw the program improving in the future, what did they hear back from each of the neighborhoods, and if they had connections or not connections, the onboarding process for the liaisons. And then we also, with the grant review team, so I have five different departments that come in and help with the grant review for the, when the city apply, I'm sorry, when the neighborhoods apply for grants. We talked to them about the process of the grants, what did they, how did they think that those went, should we offer more cycles? And I'll kind of go into that a little bit later, but they were also a part of the city staff and the stakeholders.
Thank you.
So, here is what we heard from the neighborhood meetings, the leaders and the discussion table that, at the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Forum. I won't read all of them, but the ones that I really would like to highlight are, I've been on the board either as a president or board member for the last 15 to 20 years, it's been really hard to get new members involved. It's really hard to get people to participate in the neighborhood meetings or activities. We need a better way to communicate with our neighbors. We really like the grant program, but would like more grant cycles, provide more trainings for neighborhood leaders, would like more tools on how to reach the renters in our community. That's one of the things that came out a lot, is that their, the homeownership is a little bit down in their neighborhoods, and so they have a lot of renters, and how do they engage with the renters that might only be there a year, two years, three years, but how do they actually reach out to them, and they, we're really looking for tools for that. How to work with apartment complexes, owners and managers, so some of our neighborhood associations actually, apartment complexes are a little bit, or are in those neighborhood associations, but they're not a part of it. So, what can they do to help make them become a part of it? Would like more collaboration between the neighborhoods and also businesses, nonprofits that might be in their neighborhoods. What we found is that most of the HOAs, but not all, it seems to be a little bit easier as they're already established by housing developments. But for those neighborhood associations, they had to start from nothing, and it's taken a lot more work, and they need a lot more support from the city. So, we also did a survey at the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Forum, and the top three benefits of what people identified as being a recognized neighbor, I'm just gonna hit enter, okay, to receive funds from the matching grant program. to receive funds from the matching grant program. Receive press releases and emails from the neighborhood program staff, so I'm not sure if you're aware, anything that goes out as a press release from the city is sent to me, and then I send it to the neighborhoods and to their presidents, and then they forward it on. So, they get it before the newspapers, the blogs, Facebook, they're getting it right away. Attending neighborhood program-sponsored events. Top three topics that they would like to know more about and be addressed at their neighborhoods. Code compliance, block watch, and the volunteer program. Really interesting, when I was attending these meetings, a lot of questions came out about code compliance, like signs that were in people's yards, what do they do about that, people's fences, the way they maintain their yards, there was a lot of different questions. And then the other one was block watch and speed control, and how do they monitor, if they live on a non-articular road, and how do they control the people going down, and that everybody wants speed bumps, and, you know, what are the different things that they can do to stop speeders? So, that was pretty interesting. So, next steps. We heard the neighbors' leaders loud and clear, and the vision of the neighborhood program is to promote positive communication between residents and the city. The city is committed to promoting a vibrant neighborhood, supporting community involvement, fostering a sense of community, helping residents address specific concerns and build successful neighborhoods that reflect a positive community. In the next six months, we'll be working on creating a five-year work plan for the neighborhood program that will incorporate all the feedback we received over the last couple of months, to help strengthen the five pillars of the program. We will be evaluating and expanding the grant process, offering more program opportunities, offering more training opportunities, and offering more engagement opportunities. There's one more. So, grants. Grants being our first pillar. The neighborhood program currently has four different grants available to the neighborhoods. A large grant, anything over a thousand, mini grants, under a thousand, communication grants, which we give a dollar fifty per household for communication, so those are newsletters that they are able to mail out and produce through their neighborhood, and then the picnic grants. We want to review the grant process and the guidelines, and how can we make them more available to the public? We want to offer larger, we want to offer more grant cycles, that's one of the things that we heard, they don't want to just one time a year, but it takes them a lot to actually get prepared and to figure out what they're gonna apply for. And so, especially neighborhood associations, they need more cycles to be able to get prepared for. Add a neighborhood representative to the grant review team. They were very interested in being a part of the grant process, and what does that look like, and learning from other neighborhoods. And then developing opportunities year-round. The summer is very short, and we only have a couple months, and a lot of our things are crammed packed into that summer, but how can we extend it for a year-round so that they have more opportunities? So, what do those developing opportunities look like? Some of the opportunities that we are exploring are kicking off a picnic event, oh, so you got it, okay. For new recognized neighborhoods and communities, a one-time opportunity to help spark the neighborhood into action. The screen on the green, mini grants, different opportunities to engage different people, giving the neighborhoods the flexibility to offer a variety of events throughout the year. So, one person might want to come to a kickoff picnic because they feel comfortable, they feel that they can go and they want to engage. Others might not feel that that's something they want to do, they rather have just bring their family and view a movie, but it's still an engagement, because it's still bringing them out and getting involved in their community. And then offering the new block party grant. The new block party grant would take place of the ongoing picnic grants that have been offered in the past. The original purpose of the picnic grants were to develop an occasion for people to celebrate their neighborhoods and to create a forum to meet and discuss neighborhood issues and ideas, and to get to know each other, to empower the neighborhoods to plan and implement neighborhood picnics, and to work together on a continual basis. With the new block party grant, the city would be able to help facilitate the gathering, but also have the capacity to offer more kickoff picnics to newly recognized neighborhoods, and to plan larger neighborhood celebrations that would include a larger footprint for the community building. The new block party grant would include funds for the main dish, funds for park or shelter use, funds for closing streets and barricades, funds for a movie night, and then the other one, which has been really difficult for neighborhood associations, are to have insurance. So, we'd be able to help provide that. We'd provide the interactive games, the tables and chairs, and scheduling city representatives, fire, police department, elected officials, or whoever they felt that they wanted to have at their block party.
Yes, Ms. Prince?
I don't understand. So, you have, you have your normal picnic, but this is a new grant for, for a party. This is not a picnic, this is a party, whatever time of the year, party, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand.
Okay. I can go farther into it if you-
No, it's okay, it's just I didn't understand really well, so this is, this, I just wanted to clarify, this is a party that can occur whenever during the year.
Anytime, year they want it.
Okay.
What the community has been telling Casey and us through the program is that although picnics were popular to begin with, the numbers have been dwindling, and also the engagement factor, or the opportunities, weren't as successful as they could be, so all of the community leaders, neighborhood leaders that Casey and I have met with are now wanting, instead of picnics, to move on to more opportunity throughout the year, and this is some of the things that she's discussing here.
And, and it has to be a neighborhood association, a homeowner association that wants to apply, or who can apply for this?
At this point, yes. For the block party grant, it would be a neighborhood association, that's one of the things that we're looking for into the future with the grant, these are in guidelines, is what does that mean? Could we have, have this opportunity for apartment complexes, or, you know, community groups? Kind of looking at it from the higher, the thirty thousand level, and going, okay, what is our purpose, what are we really trying to do? That's what we're hoping to do in the next six months, is to create that plan, to move forward and look at that.
Thank you.
The other difference, I just want to make sure, is that we're still offering the picnic grant for those new recognized neighborhoods. So, we would still roll out the barbecue, and the trailer, and the city staff, and do that, and do the, you know, add a spark and give them, this is what it takes to host a picnic. This would be for those ones that are already established, that are looking to do it on their own.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
So, the only difference between the block party and the picnic is no barbecue any time of the year, and possibility of a movie night?
There's additional difference for the block party grant, if they would like to, we'll still be working on that, that barbecues will also be, Casey will be getting to this a little bit more, for the larger, we're calling them planning neighborhood areas-
Neighborhood celebrations.
Neighborhood celebrations, which is in the next couple of slides, where it's a larger area, it's not just one small neighborhood, it's that neighborhoods that incorporate those areas. And so, then that's a larger party, it's probably the size of like a National Night Out type thing, where all the community in that area can come together and learn what each other does in their neighborhoods. And then, again, it's more of a festival, a smaller festival celebration that the city would then be-
And does the barbecue come out for those?
Yes, yes.
It could, or it could be something else, but yeah, it's like, what we want to do is leave it up to that community to decide really what they want and identify, and so it's us rolling out the barbecue, definitely we can-
And so, let me get to why I'm asking that question, because I know, last budget cycle, I believe it was, Dawn asked for more money for newer barbecues. I just want to make sure that outside of the special events that we use them for, like Day of Service, Arbor Earth Day, that they're still gonna be getting use.
Yeah, so I can give you examples, so last, this month, it's already been used five different times by other departments and divisions for other programs.
But yes, it will be used through this program as well.
Mr. President?
Ms. Prince, yeah?
So, just to clarify, so we're not gonna have neighbor picnics anymore, we're gonna have the, the block party grant, and we're gonna have three community parties, so far.
So far, yes.
Okay, yes, just to make sure that I'm understanding.
And then, also that, just to reiterate what Casey said, this is what the neighborhood leadership has been talking about. We weren't, we weren't going out saying this, we don't want to do this, that's not what our conversation was, it was, how do we engage more? How do we get the outreach and feel, so that you're able to come to the city and ask more questions, and be more engaged, and understand what's going on? What does that mean to you, and how does that look? And that's part of what we're finding out through, through the program.
And, and I think you've said it, but I just want to make sure it's, it's clear for anybody that's watching this presentation at home. I think really, any, anybody in the city of Renton, if they can kind of organize their neighborhood, could participate in, in these block parties, right? And so, what we actually have is some neighborhoods that are very organized, some of them had a leg up because there was a homeowners' association. Some of them are very established neighborhoods, like Renton Hill, that have just had a recognized organization for a long time. But, but anybody who, say, in parts of the Highlands where there is no organization, part of, I think, what you're talking about is new ways that, that we can reach out to those individuals and have them form up with some neighbors and hold one of these block parties. And, and I also heard you say that we want to find ways that we can incorporate the apartment complexes into them too, so that we're, that we're actually catching everybody, is that correct?
That's exactly right, yes. Just more engagement, the more we can get people-
Good.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
And I understand and value the whole aspect of year-round, but we're in the Pacific Northwest where it rains like nine months out of year, and have you guys thought about what that rain may do to the engagement potential of folks coming out to a block party or a community celebration, or?
Yes, so the, the whole concept is that they could use some of our facilities, so that's why we're giving funds to be able to rent the community center, the senior center, the neighborhood centers. They'd also, if they wanted to use the school gyms, they could use the school gyms, or if they're wanting to use a church that had a fee, we would help cover that fee, so that then, and the summer is really crazy, I heard tons of times, is that the summer is crazy, our kids are in millions of different activities, nobody's home during the summer, it's really hard to schedule something. We really, would really love to have something maybe in the fall, or something in the spring, or have that opportunity to have more engagement, where we might be getting a different group of folks that typically don't come. How could we go about doing that? So, the neighborhood, we kind of, Kelly already mentioned this a little bit, so one of the other things we want to move forward with is, in the, is called a neighborhood, in the neighborhood program, is the neighborhood celebration, so that'd be a bigger celebration. Right now, we are doing really good with the picnics that are, we do twenty-two different picnics throughout the summer, and they're a little smaller, smaller footprint, some are larger, six hundred, some are really small to fifty. With the neighborhood celebrations, what we're looking to do, if you look at this map over here, these are considered, do I take this with me? These are considered the community area plans, and there's ten of them, and there's seven within the city of Renton, and this is the template that, from CED, that we just thought is a great kind of identifying the different areas, and I don't know if you can see from your guys' view, the overlay of the neighborhoods. So, for example, if we did a neighborhood celebration in Kennydale, it would consider Kennydale and La Crosse and Clover Creek. If we did one in the Highlands area, it would be, we would consider all these different areas a part of that, and they would help plan it. If we were doing it in the Benson area, which we have, we don't really have a whole lot going on down there, we have the Cascade Neighborhood Association, but we'd be working with them to kind of create a bigger footprint of, this is your community, this is what it looks like, and we'd roll out a big neighborhood celebration, so they find identity within their, these borders, and to help them create that partnership with other neighborhoods, businesses, and maybe nonprofits that actually serve that area. It could also happen year-round, depending on what we wanted to do and the size, and we would like to commit to doing three this year, Kennydale being one, Highlands being the other, and Benson.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Prince?
Any particular area in the Highlands?
The location of actually where it would happen?
Do you just have an idea of, Highlands is a pretty big area?
So, we would use-
Are you thinking Northeast Fourth Corridor, are you thinking Sunset, or you, you know?
So, we would be using the borders up on the map, is considered the Highlands area, and then depending on who we were able to actually get to participate, and who wanted to be a part of it, I think that would help us identify the location, and really, again, it'd be back, not us just coming out and, hey, here's an event for you, we'd be really working with those neighborhood leaders to really customize it for their neighborhood, their residents, who's gonna be there, what kind of activities they want to see, so it's really tailoring it around them and their engagement, not us just coming and plopping out a program for them.
And then also bringing in, back to, to the outreach to neighborhoods that might not be noticed yet, or, or established, that bringing that in, so that's a help as far as some trainings and coachings, how they can become a recognized neighborhood as well.
And I brought that up because we're doing so much work in Sunset, I was wondering if there was gonna be a particular focus towards Sunset, that's the reason why I asked where in the Highlands.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Ritchie.
Are we still going to participate in the National Night Out, and if so, are we gonna continue to rotate the neighborhood choice for that?
Yes, we do, and that's typically driven by the Police Department, and then Community Services is the, the big supporter of that, so we help with, with setting that up and running that, but we would still participate in National Night Out, yes.
And that would be separate from these three-
Yes.
Parties, okay. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Prince?
Could you remind me, how many picnics did we have last year? Do you have that number with you?
Twenty-two.
Well, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, this is very interesting conversation, and I was on the council when we started the neighborhood program like twenty years ago, or whatever, and I remember that at the time, we'd had great deal of controversy, where different neighborhoods were up in arms, we had long meetings, many people signed up to speak, complaining about different planned unit developments in their neighborhoods and so forth, and a lot of this was attempted at outreach, trying to get people, especially because it predated, you know, the, most of us having internet and social media, so it was, how do we get people to be aware of zoning in their neighborhood, and projects coming to their neighborhood, and have more of a chance to interact with the city in advance? And so, so we, you know, it's, it's been, no question, a real success. This does address something, though, that I'm, I'm happy to see us addressing, which is that over the years, there were some neighborhoods, like I mentioned earlier, that were just natural, they could have a picnic, and there was clear leadership there, and you could just engage them.
Kennydale.
Yeah, like Kennydale was a great example. Then, interestingly, one of the things that happened was, there was, we went through a period in the Highlands where, where there was, there was, you know, kind of an acrimonious relationship between the city and parts of the Highlands, there was talk about how we were moving forward with the Sunset area, there was talk about use of eminent domain and everything, so Highlands has sort of supported a, almost a, or created kind of a political movement that was on the outside and never recognized, and so, so they ended up with no city-sponsored picnics for vast areas where lots of people lived and so forth. I think this is a great attempt to maybe get back at the, the roots, and, and say that if you're inside the border of the city of Renton, you're in one of these neighborhoods, and there'll be a celebration, and, and, and I think maybe it would be a good setup for recruiting people to, to, to sort of break it into sub-neighborhoods, at, you know, maybe this big celebration, and that's probably where you're going with this, so that, because as, as Mr. Prince is getting at, you, you're not gonna get, you know, once you've got fifteen thousand people, you're not gonna get a cohesive group that feels like they're one neighborhood cell, but you might be able to recruit leaders and find out where everybody's from, and, and, you know, get down to picnic size. But I guess I want to just acknowledge that it's probably a good, a good, good time to review what this program's doing for us.
And, and thank you, that's exactly, that's what the, we're looking at for this proposed change then, moving forward, and it will take a little bit of time, but some of these initial steps can be accomplished this year, but it is, it is the outreach and the networking, if you will, like you said, we're not expecting the, the large neighborhood planning areas to all, you know, feel like they're together in fifteen thousand, but it's the sharing of information, what's worked best for them, some things that can bring, they can bring back to their smaller neighborhoods then, and-
Yeah.
-learn from that and build on that as well.
Can I just get clarity of what, so, so is that, would that, is there kind of a, are you, are you sort of signaling or proposing here then, that, that for this summer, the picnic regiment is, is changed, is that what we're saying, or? So, so neighborhoods that have traditionally been, you know, they find themselves on a calendar for a picnic, if I, following up on what Ms. Prince is saying, they're not gonna automatically get, get scheduled for a picnic this?
That's correct, and that's what the meetings have been the last two and a half months, when we've been mostly Casey meeting- months, when we've been mostly Casey meeting with all of the neighborhood association leaders, talking about, asking what they see as-
Okay.
-moving forward for success, and what they see better involvement with them and the city. Is it a picnic? Is it, you know, what, from our neighbor-to-neighbor forum, the information we got from the survey as well? And so just sharing back, I mean, they were two and three-hour meetings-
Okay.
-discussing what-
But they could decide to reserve the fireside shelter at Coulon Park and have cider in the wintertime or something as an alternative, that kind of thing?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So that brings me to the next program that we would incorporate, using the community planning areas as a template, that we could set up neighborhood area task force that would consist of neighborhood leaders from each recognized neighborhood, businesses and possibly apartment complexes. So using that same concept with that neighborhood celebration, we would work within these areas to kind of, to come up with neighborhood leaders if they chose, to create a task force that could be a platform for us to go out and share information, to get information from beyond the grant review team, to help set up the future programs of the neighborhood. A few other programs that we could implement would be Celebrate Your Neighbor, which is a, would be just a marketing campaign to help promote getting to know your neighborhoods. It'd be coming out through our office, just sharing different ideas of how to get to know your neighbors, and what does that look like, and just celebrating neighbors. Walk with a Purpose, litter control, one of the big things that we heard is, there's a lot of garbage around the, there are different side streets, and what does that look like? And how could they be a part of that to pick it up? And is there any programs we could set up? So we thought about Walk with a Purpose, litter control, where we set up volunteer groups that we do, it could be monthly, it could be whatever that community would like, and we provide all the gear that they need, and they would go out and set out and pick up garbage.
Hey, can I ask you to start to bring this to a close? I'm kind of aware, we've got a few more items tonight.
All right.
Let's go, let's just go to the summary, and then obviously, council, you have the presentation, so if there's questions on the previous or the slides that we'll be skipping, then please let us know.
Appreciate it. Yeah, it's a very comprehensive presentation, great data.
So in summary, we would like to ask the council for support to move forward with the following: offering the new block party grant starting in July, providing the neighborhood workshop in July on the new block party grant process, and then what does the future of the neighborhood look like, offering kickoff picnic events to the new recognized neighborhoods, and offering the three neighborhood celebrations in the following areas, Kennydale, Highlands, and Benson. And then in the next six months, developing the five-year work plan for the neighborhood program.
Okay. Council have thoughts, comments, feedback?
So do you want our tacit support, or do you want our official support? And by tacit, do you, I mean, do you want us just to be like, yep, we agree, or do you want something in writing, official?
We would like, just your verbal support would be fine, but we definitely wanted to brief the entire council on the proposed actions moving forward.
So, so I'm supportive. I guess I'm wondering, what would we do if there's a particular neighborhood that comes forward and goes, wow, we were really counting on this picnic, and we love it, and we really want to do it? I mean, is there, on one-offs like that, can we say, okay, if you guys are still on board, we'll still do it, that kind of thing?
Absolutely, we'll still be evaluating this as we move forward. So yes, again, it's back to how do we engage, how do we outreach more? So it's not about closing those walls off, it's about what can we do, so-
Growing it, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Anybody have any?
I'm a little bit more concerned about the backwards, and I'm happy that Kelly just mentioned it, about how we engage more people, how we engage them to keep participating, how we, because as you just mentioned, the beginning of this program was about that.
Yes.
Was about making sure that people engage, and just to make sure that they are excited about the block party grant, and that the purpose of all of this is for the community to come together.
The one thing we didn't get to mention, because we're short on time, and I'm willing to come back, is the engagement. And the engagement opportunities that we're hoping to roll out are pretty powerful. We're really looking to revamp that when we get the new website for the city that has a lot of different components to that, that we're hoping to utilize that to really engage into the community, and getting them to engage back. Everyone engages in a different way, and that was one of the things, when I was talking to all the community members, that we really realized, everybody has their different levels of engagement, and for us to recognize that, not everyone's going to come to a picnic, not everyone's going to come to an event, but they might engage this way, they might engage this way, and we have to be able to recognize that, see that, and so we can celebrate how they are engaging and understanding. And the big part too, is really communicating and engaging with our underserved communities. We haven't been doing a good job of that, and that's one area that we really need to focus, is how do we get out to those groups that aren't engaging with us, and why aren't they engaging, and how, what is it that we could help provide, that will be the carrot for them to want to engage with the city?
Yeah, and so again, please, if you have any further questions or would like us to come forward, we will, and thank you so much for your time tonight.
Anybody not supportive of this? I mean, do they have our support, do we go forward? Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation, thank you, council.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just change the order slightly. Let's hit the regional fire authority and our local agreement, just to make sure we don't have anything hanging out there.
Right, thanks. Shane's coming up, Mr. President, I'll try to scoot this along too, we, and the fire chief, we have continued to work on fine-tuning. Last week, we ran through the interlocal and gave you an overview of that, asked if you had any questions or comments to let us know. I'm not aware that anything was delivered to Shane or to Chief Peterson. The council, or excuse me, the Planning Committee of the Regional Fire Authority, which is not yet the official governing board, but is currently the committee that's putting this together, reviewed the interlocal last week, and my understanding is, they had no changes or modifications to the agreement as well, the three members of the committee can confirm that. So I think unless there is any last-minute questions or changes, Shane, I think we're just here to see if there's, if there aren't any other questions, this is on the agenda for you to pass tonight, correct?
I think that's correct. So if you're ready to pass it tonight, you can pass it tonight, if you need until next week, we can wait then, but I believe that we have a short council next week, so we wanted to make sure you have the opportunity to pass it tonight. There are two changes from what we discussed last week, and I believe that the Planning Committee is seeing these in substance. One is the request to remove the material statement with regard to amending the exhibits, so with regard to the budget and amending the exhibits. So the exhibits cannot be amended now if they affect cost or revenues, if they decrease revenues or increase cost. So we made, we made that change, and I think everyone is on the same page about that. We also define level of service, which was highlighted last time in your package, we didn't have that language worked out. Basically, it's the existing level of service, and then we defined the ones that we wanted to make sure both parties were concerned that we were on the same page as to development review times, for at least the initial review, and we put those into the agreement. That's really the only substantive changes since you saw it last week, and that was in your packet last week. So if you have any questions about the interlocal agreement, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, great. Don, Armando, you happy with it?
Oh, yeah. We've gone over this from both directions.
So thank you to both of you, thank you to Ed for working that. Any questions from other council members?
Just a comment, is that really, a lot of the, I came into this program late in the game, and I just want to thank Armando and Ed, they put in an inordinate amount of time on this, and then I came along and played catch-up and kind of bumbled them up a little bit, but they persevered in it, and it's been a real, it's been a collaborative effort. I think when I first came on, we kind of saw that, we were the, District 25 was this way, and we were kind of this way on the other side of the table, but I really see it as a collaborative.
Right.
And Ed and, Ed and Armando really deserve a tremendous amount of credit for creating that.
Good, well done.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I guess Marcy Palmer, who had worked it also.
Marcy was there, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Ed Marcy, because they had a lot of the framework.
Good. Excellent. Okay, so I have committed the whole report that actually just sort of specifically addresses these leases. I'm just going to read this, make sure everybody's comfortable. The Committee of the Hall recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the lease agreements for Fire Station 11 and Fire Station 12, and adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into the interlocal agreement with Renton Regional Fire Authority. So I'm going ahead and signing that as a sort of an integral part of this, so, sounds good. Okay, great, that was nice and quick, so thank you, thanks for all the hard work on that. And that still leaves us some time then to talk about the King County Comprehensive Plan briefing.
Thank you, council, President Corman, council members, Chip Vincent from CED, I'll see if I can be equally as efficient with my time, here is my former colleagues before me. We had a recent, at the most recent Sound Cities Public Issues Committee, there was a briefing on the updates to the King County Comprehensive Plan. In going through the briefing materials with representative from the Renton City Council, council member Ed Prince, we went through these amendments that were being considered, and there were two that were very concerning from CED's point of view that I shared with council member Prince as part of this briefing. And I put together just a one-page briefing document for you here to highlight those two policies and be able to have an informed discussion with the council regarding them. First, is I'd just like to share with you, right now, these amendments to the King County Comprehensive Plan are in front of the King County Council. They anticipate adopting these amendments in December or January of next year. So we have about a six-month period of time to work these issues, if the council so chooses. One of the things that I just wanted to share with you by way of background first is, one of the biggest challenges that we have with annexing new areas into the city is the inconsistency in development regulations between the county and the city of Renton. Not just with respect to zoning, but with development regulations and rules, just how they measure and calculate density is significantly different from the way the city does this. To address this, the city council, back in 2012, adopted a resolution asking the King County Council and the King County Executive to enter into an interlocal agreement to do joint planning for all of the PAA's that's covered by the city of Renton. And specifically, the council asked the county to consider four things. Looking at first, asking that the King County Hearing Examiner consider comments made by the city of Renton when new developments were happening within our potential annexation area. Right now, the King County Hearing Examiner has stipulated that without an interlocal agreement, he can't consider our comments, no matter what they are. The second thing is, we wanted to be able to have a discussion with them about the zoning and development regulations and land use designations. You know, to just as closely as possible, approximate the zoning and the development, so we're on the same page with respect to how the lands ultimately can be developed. And so that's hopeful, that it would be fitting within the vision of the city of Renton for the PAA as well. The third issue was looking at transportation concurrency, a lot of the issues with transportation. We asked the county to look at transportation concurrency, not just looking at the unincorporated areas, but holistically, looking at what was happening in the city of Renton side of our corporate limits as well, when they measure concurrency. And then finally, looking at transfer of development rights. Right now, the county does not consider where they transfer development rights from the rural area to the urban area. And what we're recommending is that they only allow TDRs for areas that are zoned for 10 dwelling units per acre or greater. That means, it's already planned for higher densities, we've obviously, at those densities, done better planning for the infrastructure and the services to complement those higher densities. What's happening now is the transfer development rights is going from the rural side of the urban growth boundary, a couple miles to the inside of the urban growth boundary, and not into our designated centers, where it really should be going, where we have a better chance of accommodating the additional growth. So with that as background, by the way, I should say, we have not, so we sent that resolution to the council, the mayor's written a couple letters to the county executive. To date, there has been no action by King County to enter into any kind of joint planning with the city to deal with these issues. In fact, what they've done is they have proposed amendments that appear to, if not creating a roadblock, at least a significant speed bump in terms of the city being able to meet this objective by advancing two very specific policies that you have in the briefing paper in front of you. The first one is U26, where I'm not going to read the whole policy, you see it here, but basically, what it says is that the county will not even notify the city about changes in density and zoning unless we already have a pre-annexation agreement with King County to work with the city. So, you know, this is frankly, from our point of view, this is already our city's designated potential annexation area. We have already agreed to look at that area as the possible future, either through annexation, through protection, petition, or election method, that we'll be considering it. Now they're adding an additional rule here that says we have to have this interlocal agreement in place in order for them to even notify us about changes in zoning. Secondly, is policy U28, that says that they will not engage in joint planning processes within unincorporated urban areas unless the city, upon the commitment to annex the city through an interlocal agreement. And this is challenging from a couple different points of view. First is, as we all know, cities don't make the decision to annex areas. The citizens in the area, either through the election or the petition process, choose whether or not they want to annex into the city. And so it's placing a hurdle that helps, it really undermines our ability to collectively plan in a coordinated, collaborative manner by putting this stipulation in here.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
It seems to me like the county wants to keep their unincorporated areas, even though they cost them a lot of money.
Yeah, I, I am challenged.
By reading this, it doesn't make sense to me that, you know, all I hear when I talk to county leaders is, you know, the unincorporated areas cost us so much money, you guys should annex them. But these policies coming from their staff make it seem like they want to keep those areas, and make it unpalatable for cities to take on annexation.
Yeah. If the goal of the King County, if the goal of King County is to move these unincorporated urban areas into cities, they shouldn't be building greater barriers or requirements in order to achieve that result. Frankly, from the city of Renton's point of view, I've shared with the council previously, one of my greatest challenges in the city in my eight years here has been dealing with vested applications that are vested prior to annexing into the city, that are vested to completely different standards and rules that the city has. And to the degree we can reconcile this, this is frankly, it's good for the city, and it should be good for the county. But that's why, you know, I shared this with council member Prince originally, because these are somewhat troubling and be quite a burden for the city in order to achieve the desired-
I see.
...results.
Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I guess people know my position on annexation anyway, but I'm thinking that maybe we should pass a resolution saying that we're not going to annex any area that has a vested. You know, because what happens is, is they get this plan vested in the county, then they annex the city because they want the city services, the city sewer, and all the other stuff. And then they say, oh, by the way, now, we're already vested, so then they build something inside the city that we wouldn't normally allow. So my question to the council is, why do we want to annex something into the city that is, has a vested higher density than we would allow? I mean, I just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. Yeah. Council member Person, I've discussed that particular point with our attorney, city attorney Larry Warren, and just because this is so challenging for us, that the week before the annexation becomes final, a developer will submit an application, a vested, under King County rules, rather than operating under the city's. And Larry and I have discussed an option that we could bring back to the council based on our notification date, that if actually a vested application comes back in, we could come back to the city council and ask them to readdress whether or not they want to accept the application, based on the fact that there is a vested application. So we're trying, it's really tough with the vested rights doctrine in the state of Washington, tend to figure this out, but we're, Larry and I have kind of been scratching our heads in terms of figuring out a creative response.
And I like the direction, I actually like the direction Don's going. You know, sometimes I'll say it's going to be a little more complicated than, you know, if it's a, if it's a 42-acre parcel and the streets are too narrow, we can, it's easy to define it. What I've seen is where, you know, a section, maybe an existing tract that's been subdivided in the 1970s, starts coming into our city, and people just quickly go, hey, in the county, I could break this lot into two lots and build a house in my backyard, and puts an application in to do that. The question is, you know, you wouldn't want to necessarily sink the entire annexation of an established neighborhood if everybody's voted for it, but it would- neighborhood if everybody's voted for it. But it would sure be nice, in keeping with what Don said, to be able to just say, no, that's, you know, once, once the annexation's going, those kinds of applications don't mean anything to us. We don't acknowledge those.
I mean, I guess we all know that it actually costs the city more money to annex residential than it does business. And that, and the old formula, I think, is still true, that business pays about 60% of all the taxes that we receive. Residential pays 40%, but yet residential takes at least 60% or more of our income. So I, I guess I question the wisdom of bringing more property in that we're gonna lose money on. So that's
Um, councilmember Corman, to your point, one of the greatest challenges I deal with is these vested applications. The area just gets annexed into the city, they develop under King County standards, and then everybody thinks, well, this is what happens when land
Yeah.
annexes into Renton. This is the kind of
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Development.
Yeah.
And honestly, it is
Yeah.
King County's development standards are antithetical to the quality development standards
Yeah.
we have in the city. And everybody points to it and says, yeah, that wouldn't have happened if that hadn't annexed into Renton.
Yeah.
It's just
And it's
it is so challenging.
And it's because they timed it, because they saw they were coming in and realized we would have much, uh, more difficult, uh, terms. And so they just jump in while the, you know, I agree. So, that's really glad we're looking at that. But, but so, right now, we have a chance to try and, uh, give them feedback on these comp plan updates. That's what you're asking for today and
Yeah.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, what are other cities doing? I mean, obviously, this is applying to other cities besides Renton. Are they in the same boat as we are? And are we gonna, you know, get together with some other cities, maybe, when we approach this?
You know, thank you for that question. Uh, frankly, most of the cities don't care about this. When you look at this, this is why I take this one a little bit personally. If you look at all the PAA's for King County, the city of Renton has the largest PAA. Most cities don't even have nominal, if, if they even have PAA's. When you consider East Renton Plateau, Fairwood, and West Hill, it really feels like this is very pointed. And I may be completely wrong on that, but I will tell you, most of the cities don't have a lot of PAA's to deal with, to the extent that we do. And that's why maybe I take this more personally than I should. But the fact that we've been asking for a joint planning agreement through an adopted council resolution since 2012, and haven't gotten any traction on it. But then when we see these amendments come out that say, yeah, we'll do joint planning, but only after the city has agreed to, through an interlocal agreement, to annex these areas, you know, just feels challenging, instead of entering into it. And the, the last point I'll read, if you want to make, uh, read the last page, I included, uh, the exact policy from the King County, Countywide Planning Policies, that says, "Development agreements between King County and the cities with potential annex areas to apply to city-compatible development standards that will guide land development prior to annexation." That comes out of our own King County, Countywide Planning Policies. Those are the rules that the city and King County have to abide by. And part of my challenge with that policy, aside from my personal feelings on this, is the fact that they, King County, through these amendments, is adding conditions to requirements that specifically come out of the countywide planning policies.
Okay. Wait, what, um, what specifically would you like to ask of us at this point?
Well, um, this came out of a briefing with councilmember Prince, uh, prior to the, um, the Sound Cities, uh, Public Issues Committee meeting. So, um, we weren't asking for anything in particular, and I will defer to councilmember Prince, who said, you know what, Chip, I would like the full council to be aware of this being put on the table and the implications for the city.
Um, I think if it were me, I would ask for you all to contact your county council members and let them know how this impacts us.
Good.
Um, but that'd be my only ask.
Okay. And, and, and are we giving, are you, is your office giving the county feedback?
Yes, we plan to provide feedback. We, we've had actually a couple meetings with them and expressed our concerns verbally. Uh, we haven't put in writing yet, but really wanted to have this opportunity to discuss this with the council before we committed writing.
So I, I think that's the other thing we can give you, unless any council members, uh, you know, disagree, is I, when you write to them, I, I think you can say you're, you're passing along positions that, that we share with, with you on this, right?
Yeah.
So, um, okay.
We'll
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm glad. Thank you, Ed, for thinking to put that on the agenda.
We'll, um, if, council, if it's all right, we'll, we'll go ahead and put a letter together and, and have the mayor, uh, sign that on behalf of the mayor and the council. We'll run it by you, let you see a draft of it, but I think we've got time enough to do that.
Sounds, yeah.
So that it's more, more official and comes as an official statement from the city. I think, uh, to answer, answer, uh, councilwoman Witches' comment, White Center's the other large area that Tuckwell, uh, same as us, Tuckwell has tried to annex, Buren's tried to annex, Seattle doesn't want to annex. And so we've got these two large areas that are urban, that are creating a lot of the issues. There are other, uh, smaller areas that are outside of the urban growth boundary, and there may, there's a lot of pressure to move out there. And that's another issue that some of the cities, Sammamish, Redmond, some of the border cities are looking at. But I, I, Chip's right, the largest areas, we by far have the largest, uh, unincorporated area. And we tried to annex all three of those areas. They've all said, no.
Yeah.
So we're done.
Yeah. And, and I want to say, I think Chip's on to it, that it's kind of a vicious cycle, that, um, when they do annex, they suddenly vest to the county standards, which are a lot more lenient and a lot more density. And, and then it gives the impression that that's what the city has done.
Mm-hmm.
And then that causes other people to go, no, no, we don't want to annex, because we don't want to have that happen.
They don't want to look like that.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that should be part of our messaging, that, that we're, we're seeing this over and over again, and it's not, um, it's not working. So thank you, um, thank you for that. Um, so, hey, we did well. We got through four of the, the five items. The last one is regional issues. And my suggestion for that would be, um, if anybody has any regional issues they need to bring up, uh, just bring them up under New Business on the council, uh, meeting. And, um, and administration could bring it up under the administrative report. And so with that, I'll bring to a close. Committee of the whole meeting, we'll reconvene in 10 minutes for a regular council. Thank you very much.